Okay, seeing it's past the ten o'clock hour. The Board of Supervisors, the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting a regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned item. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. At this point, we are going to go to, we'll have Supervisor Hemington lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any introduction of new employees? Okay, seeing no new introductions. Any action from closed session, County Council?
Nothing to report today.
Okay. At this point, I'll request any deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have become attention, come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Item number four, Chair, would like to pull out for discussion.
Okay, we'll pull up number four for discussion. Okay. Okay, at this point, we're going to hear brief reports of travel, two-by-two committees from individual supervisors, and we'll start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. First of all, I want to share this sign with everybody here. This is a warning sign after we had our jetty talks. Cindy Henderson from Emergency Services has brought that up as a possibility of replacement sign. I'm going at the end of today's meeting, I'm going to drop this off at City Council's office and let them have a look-see for input. It's not in the paint yet, so to speak, but it's a, it's a good start, and I think Cindy Henderson did a very good job in putting that together, and I'll share that with Mayor Ania after this meeting. On Wednesday, I attended a special meeting for juvenile justice and delinquency prevention at the courthouse. Motion to introduce a special scholarship fund for at-risk youth was brought to the attention and passed. The commission is working on the details of the scholarship to award a needy youth who has turned his or her life around and has made a commitment to continue his or her education either in academics or in technical field. Also met with another additional homeowner on Herald Street to discuss solution to that bulge in the road which blocks viewing from Hoover Street to Washington's. It's a bit problematic, there's some speeding going on there, so I'll be discussing this problem, and I want to thank Heidi Kunstall for her input, and we'll be continuing that discussion. Also, thank you to County Planning Commissioner, District One Johnny Jacobs for his input on that. I attended a couple of great basketball games at the Crescent City J.C.'s, the 45th Annual Eighth Grade Basketball Tournament. I want to take this time to just recognize the folks who put this group together every year, and they do it so well. J.C. President Luke O'Laughlin, Directors George Wilder, Mike Mastolutis, John Phillips, and Cheer Coordinator Terry Colton. A very special thank you to J.C. Executive VP Cindy Barrett. I just can't say enough to these folks, the job well done, and it's such an economic boon to our county, our area, and I'm looking forward to the December tournament, which is the girls' tournament, and I'm hopefully help them with, with that tournament and putting it together. I was hoping at our next meeting, Chair Sullivan, we could have some kind of resolution of appreciation put together for this J.C. group here in Crescent City, Del Norte County, and to just thank them for their superb work and what a great event it was, hundreds, perhaps even maybe thousands of people, going into the thousands of fans and participants. It's really quite an endeavor, and they did a great job. On Wednesday, March 6th, attended a LAFCO orientation followed by an Agency on Agency, Agency on Aging meeting, both in Eureka. The Area One Agency on Aging Commission is actively looking for at least two commissioners from Del Norte County to serve on this five-times-a-year meeting down in Eureka, so we'd like to get the word out. They need more, this agency needs more representation from Del Norte County, so we're looking for some, some people. I think there, there is not a stipend involved, but there is mileage to and from Eureka, so if anyone's interested, please to let me know, and we'll get an application to you. Friday, March 8th, Chamber of Commerce luncheon on therapeutic therapies, a very interesting alternative method offered to those who don't want to use traditional medicines in dealing with your pain. So, I found it quite interesting attending that. Saturday, attended an all-day workshop, Chamber of Commerce put on at the home of Chris Howard in Hiuchi. Thank you, Chris, for making your magnificent home in, on the Smith River available to the Chamber group. The workshop was productive, and the Executive Board was able to quantify the four most important areas of priority going into the new year. They are funding, advocacy, membership, and events. I signed up for an events subcommittee, and with regard to that, there was a consensus that a music event would be very much welcome, and I'll report back to the Board as the Chamber unfolds for 2013. And I think one additional email I received over the weekend, folks are a little concerned, looking for that particular email. Mr. Gitlin, I want to protest the rates, water rates, rate is going up, the sewer rate is going up in the city, as, I share that concern, I'm, I can't speak for the city, but I'll forward this to City Manager Gene Palazzo. There's quite a big backlash on this rate increase in the sewer. I know costs have to be paid for, but perhaps the Council can look at prioritizing and see if they can, this can be mitigated. And immediately after this meeting, I'm heading down to Folsom for a meeting with Trindell and the group called Emergency Insurance Association, and I'll report back to that after that point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hemington?
Yes, thank you. I was requested by Dave Itzen, who's a Currie County Commissioner, to, or I was asked if I would speak at a new group that they're putting together, the Currie County Forest Collaboration. They're having a lot of the same issues in the forest that, that Del Norte County is. Actually, all the counties, I believe, all the timberland counties are having issues with, with Forest Service lands. Anyway, he asked me to speak about the, the association that I'm on, the Sustainable Forest Action Coalition, very similar group, very similar goals, so I did speak on that, and while I was there, I got to, they had a little presentation on a group that's doing this pyrolysis, I think it's called. Anyway, it's taking the, the waste products from mills and from the forest floor and making kind of a charcoal out of it and liquid fuel. I made the mention to them that they handle it just about like a particle board plant, and I told them that we had an operation that just closed down, and maybe they would be interested in another site if they expanded. I did get the gentleman's card, but I don't have it right here in front of me. Anyway, it sounded like they were maybe interested, wanted to know if we had a deep-water port, and I said, "Well, give us a couple of weeks, we'll see what we can do." But anyway, there has to be a need, you know, you can't just have a deep-water port without a need, so if there's a need there, you know, we probably could look at that. Also, the first meeting that I've been to this year for the Klamath Management Zone Fisheries Coalition was held at the Smith River Rancheria. That's a group that used to just strictly advocate for the sports fishing season, but now has integrated commercial season in also, which is, I think is a great thing, because a lot of times the commercial and the sports people could be at odds, this puts them all on the same playing field so they can work for each other rather than against each other, so I think it works real good. It looks like there's going to be a, there is going to be a commercial season, I don't know what that's going to look like yet, but the, the sports season looks good, looks like it's going to go May 1st through September 8th, seven days a week, two fish per day, 20-inch minimum in California, 24-minute inch minimum in Oregon. So, they are a good group, they've been around for a long time, so keep an eye on that, but, you know, when there's fish out there, there seems to, seems to be some pretty good seasons. Had a, kind of a one-by-two with the Smith River Rancheria, with Russ Crabtree and Denise Pageant, discussions about the impacts of land going into trust and economic impacts. Was a good, good meeting, we're looking at maybe getting some MOUs together there, they're starting to work on that. I was asked by Supervisor Sullivan to go to the North Deal meeting. Don't ask me what the deal means.
Director's External Advisory Liaison Group.
There you go, now you know. Anyway, it's very interesting, what, basically what it is, it's Caltrans telling, giving us notice on all the activities that they're, that are going on throughout their district, I think we're in District One. So, anyway, the, the projects that, that are in Del Norte County, I'll go over them real quickly. Rode down with the Highway Patrol Commander, so there was very little chance of getting a speeding ticket. And while we were there, we stopped off at Dispatch, and our ex-clerk of the Board, Jeremy Ruiz, was at her desk doing her job, and, and I didn't realize it at the time, but the Commander had the radio on, and of course she was dispatching, so it was much more noticeable going back that it was, that it was her dispatching, so that was kind of fun, listeners, she does a good job, and it was good to see her. Also, Adam Jaeger, who came out of Garberville, is the new Humboldt County Commander, he'll be stationed in Arcata, so I got to meet him. There was also Representative from Noreen Evans' office, and, I'll think of his name here.
Is it me?
No.
Chesprin?
Our new, our new Congressman.
Huffman.
Huffman, Jared Huffman, I'm sorry. They both head representatives, as well as a person from the Carpenters Union and a truck, Customer Truck Service representative, so it was a good meeting. They talked about their new, the new budget, I don't know if you know, but we're all getting a three-and-a-half cent increase in our fuel, I think it starts in July. That's supposed to make about $550 million, so pennies do count evidently, and 40 percent of that is going to go to local transportation. Now, they're taking it away, they're taking away our sales tax and then putting this in its place, and may, supposed to be, I think, maybe a little more steady funding, and they say it should increase what we get a little bit, but we'll have to see what happens with that. The projects in Del Norte County that we discussed, Klamath River Bridge, as you remember a while back, they were emergency, they replaced a couple of hinges, they're going to do the remaining three hinge replacements, cost of about $7 million, and they're possibly going to be closing between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM when they do that project, so they're going to try to get some work done at night. Last Chance Grade, they got three projects going there, one's an emergency, one's the ongoing slip, slip-out repair, and then they have some shoulder work going. We also talked about alternative routes and blah, 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 and they're looking very seriously, now they're going to go back and, and check their costs over the, at least the last, somewhere between 20 and 40 years, and see how much money they've put into it. So, they're getting very serious about looking at, at an alternative route, so hopefully that'll get going. Also, we've got a gateway project north of town where they're going to put in a lighted crosswalk and some traffic, traffic calming devices, so looking forward to that, there's been several accidents there. Doctor Fine Bridge Replacement, supposed to happen in 2016, that's a $50 million project, very interesting on how they're going to do it, we'll keep you posted on that, because it's kind of interesting on what they talk about. 197, 199, SDAA improvement, waiting on the fire, final environmental document, and they're hoping to go to construction spring of 2014. Other projects that have got going that are not in Del Norte County, but, but of interest to us and Del Norte County is the Willits Bypass, they're supposed to have groundbreaking May of 2013, that's supposed to take four seasons of work. Richardson's Grove, they had to redo a tree mapping, the diameter of tree mapping construction they're expecting to start in 2014. And the Buckhorn completion, if you're interested in that, which I just find amazing, every time I drive through there, completion is supposed to be in 2018, so they got quite a few more seasons to go there, but that's, that's been pretty interesting. Also had a, had a two-by-four with Six Rivers, Jay and myself, they got the proposed alternatives for the travel management plan, so we'll be going over those. Hopefully they'll get us some mapping to go along with that. And finally have gotten Mary Kay Vandavere is going to report to the Board on our first meeting in April, or at least she's scheduled to. We've been trying to get her for several months to make a commitment to give us a report on what's going on. As you know, we've had vacancies in the rack that, you know, we've heard of on the radio and in the newspaper, but never have gotten any documentation that that's been, been happening, as well as some OHV money that, that the Six Rivers National Forest has applied for. Unfortunately, none of that was applied for, for Del Norte County, so they were, that's why they said that they didn't notify us, but my question was, why wasn't any money applied for, for Del Norte County? They didn't have much of an answer for that. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, our application for the runway safety area improvements has been submitted to Coastal, we've got some fine tuning to do to that, there are some parts that are incomplete. And I met with Harbor Commissioner Wes White the other day, speaking of the airport, they're going to have a lot of material that they need to move out, these are not dredge spoils, but materials that they need to move out from the parking lot that haven't, haven't been moved before, so they're not something that's contaminated or anything, but anyway, for usage at the airport for fill that we might need there. And that was about it for me.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McClure?
I, Senior Senator had a meeting, and we're still dealing with the funding issues, but we're moving forward. We haven't heard from the community development yet on exactly what we're going to have to replace and repay, but that is all moving forward. I too attended the Juvenile Justice Commission meeting, and at that meeting, I was able to talk with the Sheriff quite a bit about the alarming, what I would consider alarming behavior of a lot of our teens that aren't, they're not entering into the system, and they're not being arrested when they're under the influence because of the cost, and he agreed that it's a, it's a slippery slope, and we need to figure out how to take care of it. I also talked with Chief Plack on the same issue, because I see just a number of children that are slipping through the system and we're not, we're not stepping up and assisting them. And I also talked with the District Attorney about the same thing, and I talked with the Acting Chief Probation Officer about the same thing, because I'm extremely concerned after working with children for the last 29 years in this county, I'm seeing a disconnect of what's happening with, with them, and so I'm extremely concerned, and I think we're going to just keep talking and try to figure solutions. The Redwood Park Association is scrambling because of the sequestration, that there's a possibility that the Hiuchi Visitors Center will not be open this summer, which is a drastic action, that we're, as a community, we're going, going to feel that, because people are going to be driving by and not stopping, and not getting the brochures to go on the trails to stay a little longer, and it, it can really possibly make a strong hit in our tourist industry. I traveled to San Diego for the Coastal Commission, and that was a five-day event because of getting out, but the delays were not out of Crescent City, the delays were in San Francisco, so we couldn't blame people here by any means. The, Jared Huffman will be here on the 25th of March, and I don't, I'm not privy to his schedule, but if people, you know, want to see him or talk to him, that would be some, a time to, to visit. And I attended the Solid Waste Meeting where we took care of the abandoned vehicle agreement, where we authorized improving or the maintenance and the repair that was necessary from rain damage at the landfill. They elected Richania, as, we elected Richania as the Chair, and I asked that they not appoint or elect a county official, because I was only there for that meeting, and so that was left open. They had a reserve in their budget, and that's about it. I also, the Historical Society, we met, and we are scrambling to figure out how we're going to have to buy a new LED light for the lantern, because they no longer make the bulbs that go into the old lantern, so we have to rearrange the deck chair, so to speak.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Finnegan?
Thank you. I also had a couple of meetings, most of them were out of the area, except for fielding calls for constituents, mainly about the sewer rates. So, I think Roger brought it up, but perhaps we can do an information policy and just what role County plays in that, that it really is the city water system. We don't even get a vote on those rate increases, and then also tying in to how that reflects on sewer rates. So, people get very frustrated when they're in the county and, and don't have a voice on that. Went to Sacramento and had a legislative workshop with the, with ABAG, which is the Area Bay Area Governments. What they deal with often unfortunately sets precedence for what we deal with, whether it's water quality or air quality. We talked about economic development and how the new form of economic development is probably going to be county-centric, which is good news. Then I made a trip back to Washington DC for the National Association of Counties. I sit on the Transportation Subcommittee, as well as the Aviation Subcommittee, as well as the Western Interstate Board, and then also in the role as President of CSAC, had access that we haven't had before. So, in the transportation issues, some of what they talked about was the gas tax. Gas tax historically, it goes into the Highway Trust Fund, and it's at 18 cents, and what that represented was 10 percent of what a gallon of gas costs. Well, unfortunately, as the price of gas went up, and as cars become more efficient and use less gas, the trust fund is being depleted, it needs about another 10 to 12 cent bump. If we were to have 10 cents, or 10 percent, you would be paying 43 cents a gallon in tax. So, there, something has to be done there, so we're working through that. The Aviation Subcommittee talking about the assault, and I'll wait, wait, take that, Richard.
Richard, read the sign when you go out the front door that says, "Turn your cell phone off" when you come in.
Is it for me? Anyway, Aviation Subcommittee, the essential air service is under assault. Once again, there's always a Senator that thinks that you can save money and doesn't understand the necessity of the essential air service and what it really does and how local economies depend on that. Had several meetings back there with, we met with Dr. Stephen Chaw, who is the Chief Medical Officer for the Center for Medicaid and CAHIP Services. Talked with him about the implication, or the implementation, rather, of the Affordable Care Act. As I think I've reported out before, we're negotiating with the Governor on the implementation of that in California, as it applies to expanding Medicare, Medi-Cal, to the poverty, what, 133 to 138 percent of the federal poverty level, and what that implication is and what the savings are going to be. We needed to tell, to find out whether or not you could have a high bread, where the federal government was willing to deal with county-specific, or whether it's going to be an either-or, either a state option or a county option. We then went over to the executive offices at the White House and met with Jay Williams and Kellen Blossom, who are the Legislative Directors and who represent our liaisons between local government, and local government being counties. We talked about issues like secure rural schools, which is high on their list of things that they're going to advocate for, the pension tier changes, SCAP, the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program that affects our jails and the cost of medical assistance there. We talked about pension tier changes, we talked about health reform implementation, and let them know that we needed to open up a line of communication there, so when we go back to negotiate with the Governor on a state level for counties, that now the state knows that we've been talking to the feds, and that we have a direct line to the White House on what they want to see. So, I think that's going to enhance our negotiations in Sacramento there. Met with Senator Feinstein, I hosted a congressional breakfast when we were back there, that had Representative Denham, Representative Garamendi, Valadeo, Representative Gary Miller, Representative Ruiz, Representative Honda, Representative Spear, and also Lamoffa, and also Senator Boxer. Had breakfast with them, and then they all spoke to us about what the priorities were and what their vision is, and it's a good under, we talked about sequestration, we talked about a lot of things, but what really hit home is how they still have not found out how to work together. When Representatives talked to us here at a local level, like, well, for example, Assemblyman Honda from the Bay Area talked about how important education is, and how important our children are to the future of this, the country, but also the future of our communities, and that there needs not be 50 different ways to judge whether children are being adequately educated and whether the programs are working, but really that the feds needed to have some role in that. And then our Representative Lamoffa got up and said, "You know, there's no reason for the feds to be involved in education at all." So, it, it's a problem, and it's a problem in that sequestration happened, so we now have this austerity program, which unilaterally caught, cut things across the board without any rhyme or reason, and so, yes, it might have cut some defense funding, but it also is going to drastically affect the way, our childcare, it's going to drastically affect disabled and the elderly and the children, things that we should have prioritized. And the theme was, is that, "Oh, by the way, you're not going to get that money back." So, we're looking at some tough times there. Had conversations continued, met with Congressman Jerry McNerney, Doug Lamoffa, obviously, met with Jared Huffman back there, so some of our other Representatives. When we were talking with, whether it was the White House, or whether it was the Senator Feinstein, or Senator Boxer, when we went into these offices, we dropped off CSAC priorities, which have everything to deal with fee-to-trust issues, the reauthorization of secure rural schools, which really has a lot of sympathy now, if we can just get it rolling through some legislation. Talked about veggie, I call it veggie levitation, it's really levy vegetation, removal policy with the Army Corps of Engineers. Senator Boxer corrected me. Implementation of the Affordable Care Act, the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, SCAP, the remote sales tax, pension tier changes, property assessed, Clean Energy Program, the PACE Program, and of course, the Clean Water Act, Section 404 permitting. So, the bottom line is, is a lot of good topics, a lot of good meetings, and it translates from the national level back to the local level, where I think it allows us to have a little more input, which is always good. Some of the speakers at the luncheons, the general sessions, Bob Woodward, Nancy Pelosi, Attorney General Holder, a few Senators, it was, it was good, very good. Came back, had an airport JPA meeting, where things are moving along, we're trying to get the permit to the point, the, to where Coastal can give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down, that's going to be the last hurdle, and then had a meeting over at the Family Resource Center with First Five, and to talk about new lease agreements and just how things are going, and, and the spirit of cooperation, and that leads us up to today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, I'll be much brief, I was on vacation for, since the last meeting that we had, so the only thing that, a couple of things, I've had several conversations. So the only thing that, a couple of things, I've had several conversations and I'm sure other supervisors have with ongoing regarding the dwindling land base in our county, specifically Trinity County, Siskiyou County, Plumas County. There are ongoing concerns that the, not only is the land base dwindling and becoming public land, but also the revenue source that that land, private land usually generates to provide government services is shrinking. It's ongoing service, especially if you go north of us to Curry County. I know when we had that joint meeting with Curry County Board of Commissioners up there, they voiced the same concerns. So it is something going forward that, that needs to, secure rural schools is one item that, that has to get reauthorized, which right now is not. And to the local county, that's over $2.5 million between schools and roads. So there are some really significant hits that, and it's due to, due to our particular circumstances of a very small amount of private land here. And then also, just to announce, in April, we'll, myself, CAO Serena and Supervisor Finnegan will be headed back to DC at the suggestion of our federal advocate to have discussions with legislators specifically concerning secure rural schools and dealing with Forest Service. That seems to be an ongoing issue. And I would encourage any supervisors that have additional items that want to address, get ahold of us and we'll make sure to include that on, on our trip. At this point, I'm going to, supervisor, so I apologize.
Perhaps the most important thing that I omitted was the number one priority for National Association of Counties, which needs to be our priority. There is an assault by the legislature back there, by Congress, on the tax-exempt bonds. They want to start taxing municipal bonds. Between 2003 and 2012, 165 trillion tax-exempt bonds were issued. These are the bonds that deal with local infrastructure. 178 billion went to bridges and roads, 106 billion went to transit. In 2012, 179 billion funded 6,600 projects. If the taxes are levied, the rates are going to go up, the costs are going to go up, and the impacts to locals is going to stop our infrastructure rehabilitation. So in talking with anybody, and I'm talking to all of you out in the audience, when you're talking to your legislatures, legislators, please, on the federal level, tell them hands off the tax-free municipal bonds. They are a tool we need at the local level. Thanks.
And I'm glad you actually brought that. That I, in the other job I hold, that there is, I mean, that is the major source of funding for a lot of municipalities to do these major projects because a lot of cases, the money is not available upfront to do that. So by issuing bonds and borrowing from the private sector to do that, but the enticement, I can tell you, the, the market would, in terms of the tax-free municipal market would, you'd see it, it would just shrink and the source of funds to do that would, would dry up. So there is, you know, an incentive for a private investor to do that, that wants the tax break of that, but that will disappear, like you said, if they go after it. It's one of those things that would just, you know, penny, penny wise, pound foolish. I mean, it's just, you know, you're going to think you're going to get all this revenue and you're going to dry it up and it's just going to disappear. It's not going to be there. So other than that, I had a birthday and, and I'm still bringing down the age for the board, so I'm helping them out there. So anyway, at this point, we will go to brief report from County Ministry Officer.
Recently, we've been working, as I've reported now, for several months on Point St. George. We did ask for an extension and still dealing with mitigation issue. Hope to have that done by the end of May at this point now. A lot of that's dependent on finding a location to be able to meet the minimum requirements for the area that we have to cross with the trail. We've been, in the initial steps of analyzing the contamination at the old CDD building, lead-based paint, with the idea of attempting to deal with that building through this next budget year, which will come up during the requested budget typically, once we have a better idea of what the abatement will be and what it might cost. So we're going to go through a couple of steps before we get to the obvious big ticket, which is abatement and then disposal and demolition. Been preparing the mid-year report and preparing for the 13, 14 requested budgets, which will start in April. And the, by the end of this week, that schedule will have been sent out to all the departments so that we can get started on that process. And we've been dealing with miscellaneous negotiations, whether it be employees or contracts or such.
All right. Thank you. At this point, we're going to, we've got a couple timed items on that we've, we're running past. So we're going to go to a public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Mr. Miles.
Mr. Sullivan.
Is the mic on? Okay.
Mr. Sullivan, I hope today that you would do something that's been delayed. I mean, I've been out of town and I want to thank Roger Gitlin to make, come by and to make sure I was alive, but there's something serious that I think-
We missed you, Richard.
I, there's something serious that I think you should take some action today about. Mary Wilson, over, I think, three months ago, brought a letter, a recommendation to the city and to the county. I'm aware, because when I got back, I went to the city to ask the city blight officer if Mr. Mason and him had met yet. They haven't. And this kind of disappoints me because I think if you would direct, if the board would direct staff today to have that meeting, the recommendation that your solid waste task force made could be implemented. Then I'd like to make a suggestion. When I was down south, I spent a lot of time with an old fart watching a lot of TV. And one of the things that the cable company in Monterey County does is they send out messages presented by the county, the city, and their Chamber of Commerce, putting the best foot forward for the visitors that visit that area. I know that we are a brighter gem than Monterey Bay and we're not a tourist trap. So I would hope that you would contact the cable company and see if, if little things could be done by the three entities to put our best foot forward. Then I have a concern, and I want to bring it to your attention. They are a number of county-owned vehicles parked close to Denny's. I witnessed something not too long ago that I kind of have to laugh about it. If you had an Oklahoma credit card and you needed gas for your car, because all these vehicles are parked in the dark, you wouldn't need to go buy or force up gas. All you would have to do is go over there and hide behind a van and help yourself. May- maybe, maybe the county could address that issue because the cost of gas is quite high to keep those vehicles on the road by.
Thank you. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Yeah, go ahead.
Basically, I became aware of, oh, Andy Larson, the county, a solid waste authority meeting that kind of took me by surprise. I knew the county hadn't appointed two members and it was my understanding when the ten-member board-
You know, Andy, I'm, I'm going to, actually, we've, we've got something on number nine on, on the agenda that we can bring if, we'll be discussing it, so that'd be a good time to write. Sorry to cut you off on that. We're going to go to, any other public comments? Okay, seeing no public comment, we're going to close public comment. We're going to go to our Delnart County Agriculture Department update. Kendall Smith.
Morning. I'm Ken Smith, Delnart County Ag Commissioner. I just want to make a few comments, but put everything into perspective about county ag departments. California's been a leading agricultural producing state in the United States for 50, 60 years. Out of the 10 top ag-producing counties in the United States, nine of them are in California. Back in 1881, the legislature saw and how important agriculture was and would be in California, so they established in every county what was called the Board of Horticultural Commissioners. And eventually, over time, the Horticultural Commissioner Board became individual ag commissioners. And California's the only state that has county ag departments. So that's how we got to where we are today with the county ag department. Your county ag department here has a couple divisions, the Agriculture and Weights and Measures Division and the Livestock and Animal Control Division. We're located over on 2650 West Washington Boulevard, over by the airport. We are an enforcement agency. We're enforcing provisions of the California Food and Agriculture Code, Business and Professions Code, Health and Safety Code, Penal Code, California Code of Regulations, and the Delnart County Code. Certified staff are public officers with citation authority and the authority to assess administrative civil penalties, including fines and license revocation and so on. The mission of the Agricultural Division is to promote and protect the agricultural and natural resources of Delnart County and to ensure equity in the marketplace for the consumer and the merchant. Mission of the Livestock Division is to protect public health and safety and promote responsible pet and animal ownership. What are the agricultural resources of Delnart County? Every year, we produce a crop report. I've included the latest one in your packet there. Roughly every year, we produce about $50 million worth of crops. This equates to three times that amount or about $150 million a year into the local economy. So agriculture is an important element of every county in California, including Delnart. Some of the crops that we produce here are lily bulbs, other ornamentals, livestock, milk, and timber. These are some of the nursery crops that are produced, Easter lily bulbs, and then once in a while, there's a good crop of poinsettias and other nursery crops. How do we go about protecting and promoting these agricultural and natural resources? My department conducts quarantine inspections of incoming shipments of household goods that come from eastern United States as people move and we do gypsy moth inspections and other inspections on those household goods. We inspect incoming plant shipments at retail nurseries and feed supply stores. We certify shipments of our crops that go to other states and all over the world. We issue phytosanitary certificates, like on lily bulbs that go into Canada, the Caribbean, and so on. We protect our agricultural natural resources through pest detection activities, including insect trapping for various pests. I put a gypsy moth handout in your packet there. The gypsy moth is a pest that damages plants, larval stage especially. They're a pest of oaks, alders, redwood, pine, fir, and so on. So it's important that we put the 100-plus traps out every year that we do to try to protect our natural resources. Japanese beetle is another pest that we're trying to monitor and detect and make sure it doesn't get established in Delnart County. It's a, it's a pest of, of plants and grass crops and so on. Both those pests are notorious hitchhikers. They come across the United States on truck shipments and various other means. We also survey and treat invasive species and diseases like weeds, sudden oak death, and so on. Some of the pests that we're treating are yellow star thistle, knappweeds, toad flax, broom, gorse, and knot, knotweeds. This is a new pamphlet that just came out by the California Invasive Pest Council, and it details some of the pests that are invasive to California and some are of concern here in Delnart County, like yellow star thistle along the roadsides and New Zealand mossles. And one year, we put out some traps to see if we had any Asian longhorn beetles in our county, and fortunately, that came up negative. So that's another way that we are protecting the resources in Delnart County. We're also in charge of protecting the natural environment through, through our job, specifically through pesticide use enforcement, because it takes control materials to produce the crops that we have. And some of the things we do with pesticide use enforcement are we issue permits for the various materials to the growers. We do onsite inspections, storage inspections, we do application inspections, we do pre-site inspections, you know, to make sure everything would be safe to make that application. We register pest control operators, pest control advisors, and so on. We do worker health and safety inspections to make sure that people working with those materials out in the field are safe and protected. We promote the resources through the publication of the crop report every year, and I included the latest copy of the crop report. Every year, we're required to produce one and we're beginning to gather the information to produce the one for 2012 now. As far as weights and measures go and promoting equity in the marketplace, weights and measures is one of the oldest professions. It goes back to biblical times. And we are, we test scales at retail and we test gas pumps. So if you go to your gas pump and gas up your car today, look for that red seal. That means that my staff has been out there and made sure a gallon is a gallon with our provers. We also, we, we verify the weights and volumes of prepackaged commodities like the meats and cheeses at the store and even firewood. A cord needs to be a cord. We have a little pamphlet there on how to protect yourself when you're buying firewood and make sure, and try to ensure that you don't get ripped off that way. Over on the livestock division side, every county in California's been declared a rabies county, so it's important to monitor the presence of rabies. And one way we do that is to require that all dogs in the county be licensed. And to be licensed, they have to have a valid rabies, up-to-date rabies shot. We impound stray dogs and livestock to try to help the public health and safety so that the dogs aren't marauding and hurting people and damaging property and so on. We do dog bite investigations in conjunction with the Health Department. So we want to make sure that a dog that bites somebody has a valid rabies. And whether they do or they don't, the dog needs to be quarantined to observe it to make sure it doesn't come down with rabies. On dogs that are being pests and nuisance, we hold administrative hearings and sometimes we have to declare the dog a public nuisance, potentially dangerous dog or even a vicious dog, and there's sanctions- or even a vicious dog, and there are sanctions that go along with that. We respond to complaints about abuse, animal abuse, and animal neglect. And we work with the Humane Society, and we investigate those and try to do everything we can to correct those situations. This is a picture of the animal shelter over on twenty-six fifty Washington Boulevard with the outdoor pens and some of the animals there. We also do livestock. We've brought in numerous neglected and abused horses since I've been here. And we try to find homes for them or send them to rescues. And we rebuilt the corrals here recently. And so we work with, you know, from time to time. We have a horse now, we've gotten sheep, we've gotten goats, rabbits, you name it. So we do livestock also. What we try to do with the animals that nobody comes and gets is we try to network them out. They either get redeemed to their owner. We either try to adopt them out to a suitable person in the public or we try to find a suitable rescue organization that could give them more exposure in a bigger area or provide them with some of the needs that we can't afford to give them. We do this networking via the Internet, on Pet Finder, Facebook. We use the print and broadcast media. We work in conjunction with the Humane Society. And they try to organize and get rescues going. We try to keep the dogs healthy and happy at the shelter. And one of the ways we do that is we have an agreement with the Humane Society, which back when I first came here, you guys signed. And we train people to become certified walkers, and they walk the dogs, they help pick up the poop. They give them baths, they give them some obedience training and things like that. So, I mean, in the last few years, we're up to almost ten thousand hours of volunteer time, which, you know, equates to about a hundred thousand dollars of free labor. So we're grateful for that. And every dog, we try to get every adoptable and every treatable dog either adopted, redeemed, or sent to a rescue, because pets do make great partners. Our staffing to accomplish all this is a very small department. We're made up of myself, the ag commissioner, I'm the ag commissioner, the seal of weights and measures, and the director of animal control. We have a deputy ag commissioner, we have an agricultural aide, an administrative secretary, an animal control officer. And we've been able to obtain some alternative funding, so we have some seasonal labor. Basically, what this equates to, though, is we are a bare-bones department, and we have a Spartan existence. And basically, we have one FTE for the three functions that we have, which is agriculture, weights and measures, and animal control.
Ken, do you want to define FTE just for the public?
I'm sorry, an FTE is a full-time equivalent employee. So in other words, we have a person that works equal to one year in each of these functions, which is, if you look at animal control, our population of our county is roughly thirty thousand. We have one animal control officer. So it'd be like the city of Eureka having one police officer. Basically, that's what we're doing with animal control. I mean, we're spread out pretty thin, but that's the reality of what it is. And this is your staff at the ag commissioner's office. From left to right, that's me, that's Lynn Marshall, the administrative secretary, Dave Caviel, Senior, the agricultural aide, Dave Caviel, Junior, the animal control officer, Jim Buckles, the deputy ag commissioner, and Brent, he is our seasonal employee. Our funding for these divisions and these functions and mandates are, on the ag side, we have state contracts, various ones, we have subventions, like the gas tax. We try to apply for and obtain grant funding. We have service fees, and then, of course, general fund support from the board. On the animal control side, it's basically the same thing. We have dog license fees, other service fees. We have a contract with the city of Susanville to perform animal control services in the city limits. And of course, we have general fund support on that function also. Some of the challenges that we have currently with the way things are, a big challenge is to provide and maintain an adequate level of public service in these times of increasing costs, decreasing revenues, and dwindling staff. Another challenge is to seek and obtain creative, alternative sources of funding. And the way government works today is you have to have partnerships with other stakeholders. And so our challenge is to always be looking for effective partnerships with stakeholders. So in a nutshell, that's your county ag department, what we do, what the funding is, what the challenges are. And I want to thank you for this opportunity to share this with you and the public. And a lot of times, people don't realize that we're out there and what we're doing. So I hope this helped.
All right. Any questions, comments from supervisors? Supervisor Finnegan?
No.
Oh, okay.
Good job, Ken.
Thank you.
I want to say good job, too, because you guys, it's looking better out there than it's looked in fifty years.
Thank you. We're doing, we're dedicated employees. I mean, every department has dedicated employees. But we're really excited about what we do and the challenges we have. It's just another way of saying there's opportunities out there for us to meet those. So thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Supervisor Getlin?
You know, Ken, I'm never surprised, and I'm always impressed, when I speak to you. So again, this is just such a great job, and I can, I want to congratulate you and your staff for doing what you do. A couple of questions. When you're measuring a gallon of gas, and I'm going to be just real basic about it, how are you, you're going to a tank, you want to make sure a gallon is a gallon, because, you know, gas is pretty expensive. You're probably the most expensive in the lower forty-eight. So are you taking what you consider a measurable container, which is a gallon? And then, are you pumping a gallon of the gas into that and then saying, okay, this equates to what's on the screen? Is that how it's done?
Yes, we have a five-gallon prover that's been certified by the Division of Measurement Standards in Sacramento. And it has a gauge on it. And so we pump five gallons in there, and it has a site gauge broken down by cubic inches. And the tolerance is six cubic inches over or six cubic inches under. And if it's in that range, we can seal the device. And if it isn't, then we put a red tag on it. They have to get a device repairman and get it repaired, and then we come back out. On scales, we have weights, you know, we have certified weights. Actually, all the weights in California are actually traceable back to the world standards in Paris, France. But we get them looked at and brought up to snuff in Sacramento at the Division of Measurement Standards. So these are precise testing devices that we use to make sure that a gallon is a gallon and a pound is a pound.
The other question I had is the fallout from all the rescued animals from that puppy mill. Have all those little creatures of God been placed appropriately?
Yeah, all those animals have either been adopted out or sent to rescues. And I have to go to court this afternoon to address the other part of it, which is restitution.
Supervisor Hamm, is there any?
Nope.
Ken, you do a great job, and I do think it's some things. If you get a chance, and this is for members of the public, you should get, you should read the Delnart County Livestock and Crop Report. I don't think people fully understand the impact that ag has, agricultural products have in this community. It's a huge industry.
It really is.
You're talking fifty million dollars.
And about a hundred and fifty million with related industries and services.
Yeah. So it's a huge, huge industry, and I think sometimes it just kind of goes ignored. But that's also why Ken's job is so important to continue to, you know, sudden oak death, so far, you know, knock on
Yeah.
non-oke continues to stay out of the county, and that is a big concern.
We're surrounded by it, and everybody predicts we'll get it, but so far, we haven't.
Yeah. The second thing is, I think, you know, it's been cited on past supervisors also, is that partnerships really are the key as to why you have the success you do with the animal. Do you know what, with the dog control situation? What was, do you know, have an idea ballpark-wise percent what the kill ratio was before?
Forty-three percent.
So forty-three percent. So for members of the public, before Ken came into the office and developed that relationship with the Humane Society, which is always a growing relationship, right? You know, aches and pains and successes? Yeah.
Growing or growing?
Growing. I think what we've gone to is our, what's the kill ratio right now?
Less than one percent.
Less than one percent. So all of the dogs that you hear about, and a lot of pounds statewide and nationwide, you have a much bigger percentage of dogs that are put down. Ken's done a great job with the Humane Society, done a great job in terms of making sure there's less dogs that are being put down. So that's a significant, that's a significant plus, so.
We have great partnerships on the ag side, too. I mean, the weed management area, Natural Resource Conservation District. I mean, so we're trying to make partnerships on all sides.
Yeah. And that's the only way, it's skin and bones. One of the things that, just to point out, there is a process for members of the public, you know, supervisors, we get calls all the time that really regarding, you know, if you've got a dog that attacks another dog or something. There is a process out there, and I know if you call the animal control, they will give you the process, a hearing, hearing process in terms of having the neighbor's dog taken care of in that respect. So anyway, good job, great presentation.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah, on this public comment. You got to come to the microphone, Phil. Is this on Ken's presentation?
Yeah, just a real quick question about the publication. For our information, where do we pick those up if we want to peruse those? At your office?
Yeah, at the office, or you can email us. It's also on the Delnart County website.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So it's an email publication as well, then, huh?
They support documents, I mean, schools use them, great schools, all the way up to universities, combining institutions use them, farm subsidies use this information.
It'd just be, yeah, it'd be good reading.
Okay, thanks. Any other public comment on ag commissioner? Okay, we are going to take a two-minute break, and then we'll be with Dr. Duncan's presentation. We're going to come back in session. And we had a ten forty-five timed item for Sutter Coast Hospital update from Dr. Greg Duncan. And, oh, yeah, got it. If you can come on up to the mic.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking all of the supervisors for giving Dr. Caldwell and me the opportunity to bring our concerns to this board. And I would like to begin with a summary of events of the past two weeks. On February the twenty-eighth, an attorney mutually agreed upon by Sutter Health executives and our medical staff to issue a legal opinion on regionalization, released his preliminary report. I know the board is aware of regionalization, but for those who may not be, regionalization transfers the ownership and all future governance of our local hospital, which is currently a separate corporation, over to Sutter Health and a regional board that meets in San Francisco. John Harwell, a recognized expert in healthcare law, concluded that regionalization violates California law and exposes physicians to sanctions by the Medical Board of California. It also appears that the manner in which Sutter Health and our local board attempted to implement regionalization violates Medicare conditions of participation, joint commission hospital accreditation standards, the bylaws of Sutter Coast Hospital, medical staff bylaws, and the California Business and Professions Code. As soon as the legal opinion was received, the medical staff met to discuss the findings. And we resolved by unanimous consent to notify the Board of Directors of Sutter Coast Hospital that if no corrective action was taken within ten days, the medical staff would be obligated to inform state and federal regulatory agencies. One week ago, I presented the following additional information to the hospital board at a subcommittee meeting. Based on a review of all of the board meeting minutes and supporting documents for the past two years, it appears that six Sutter Health executives repeatedly provided false and misleading statements to our hospital board, the hospital medical staff, this county board of supervisors, and our community. Three days following my notification to the hospital board, Mike Kohill, Sutter Health Senior Vice President, Eugene Sukci, Sutter Coast Hospital CEO, and hospital board chair Ken Hall jointly announced that regionalization has been, and I'll quote, "postponed indefinitely," end quote. However, and this is very important, it is noteworthy that Sutter Health and the board of Sutter Coast Hospital declined to set aside their motion before the Court of Appeals, which seeks to lower the injunction which blocks regionalization and critical access designation. I did inform the hospital board of the financial burden which Sutter Health's decision to expand the litigation to the Court of Appeals is placing on this county. However, no one in the boardroom was in favor of setting aside Sutter's litigation in the appellate court. in the appellate court, even though the appellate court action is redundant in the face of upcoming arbitration, which has already been scheduled. To summarize, the hospital board decided to postpone regionalization, but also to proceed with their legal efforts to remove the injunction which blocks regionalization and critical access designation. I'm going to shift gears a little bit to critical access now. It was announced last month by Sutter Coast CEO Eugene Suksi, and I'm going to quote, "Exploration of critical access may need to take precedence over regionalization," end quote. This board may recall that in response to a question on the possible implementation of critical access designation here in Crescent City, during a board of supervisors meeting on 2/28/12, Mr. Suksi stated the following to this board, again, quote, "We have actually been too large to be a critical access hospital because we operate above that 25-bed threshold. The medical staff has unanimously agreed that critical access designation is inappropriate for this community." You may also be aware that Sutter Health is conducting a study on future options for the hospital as reported in today's newspaper. What is less well-known is that the study is entirely funded by Sutter Health Corporation, coordinated by Sutter Health, using a list of consultants chosen by Sutter Health, with some as yet undefined input from five local community members. The request for proposal was approved by the hospital board last Thursday, even though no one on the board was given the opportunity to read the proposal in advance of the board meeting. I objected to the immediate approval of the document, and the motion passed nevertheless. Finally, Sutter Health has already announced the study results essentially, and I'm going to quote, and this is Sutter Health Public Relations Director, "Sutter Health is the best partner for us now and in the future." That quote was placed on a key messages statement that was distributed to the board of directors without my knowledge and without my input. This raises concerns that the study results have been predetermined. This evening, I will give a town hall presentation at the fairgrounds outlining concerns that Sutter Health may be in violation of civil and criminal law. My specific concerns, based on multiple false statements by Sutter executives, include possible fraud, coercion, and undue influence. I would be happy to send this presentation to any board members interested in learning more, but who may not be able to attend tonight's meeting. I'd like to close by making four requests to the board of supervisors for your consideration. First, provide county counsel to help review our concerns regarding Sutter Health's activities in this county, and we appreciate the support which we have been receiving up to date. Second, to communicate the concerns of county residents, approximately 2,500 of which have already signed a petition opposing Sutter Health's action, to your contacts at the national and state level, and also to regulatory agencies. Third, and I think most importantly, we would like to consider your asking the California Attorney General to begin a formal investigation of Sutter Health's activities in Delnart County, as I outlined in a recent letter to this board. There is a tremendous amount of additional information which you haven't been able to see at this point. And finally, I would request that the Attorney General be asked to maintain the status quo at Sutter Coast Hospital with respect to our bed capacity, staffing levels, and local ownership until the investigation is complete, and I thank you for your consideration.
Any questions or comments from supervisors? Supervisor Finnegan.
Hi, Dr. Duncan. Again, thank you very much, because as we've said before, this is something that sometimes people get complacent after a while, and it actually is ramping up in seriousness. It came to my attention, I heard, and I know you've had a lot to do with the finances and trying to get the information regarding this. I heard that Sutter, who was operating in the black, took out a $30-plus million note against the property, which negatively impacts their bottom line, shows that they're in the red. Where did that $30-plus million dollars go? Did it go to Sutter Health to fund their legal activities, or just to show that now you have bad books that make it less attractive to somebody else? I mean, is that calculated, what they did?
That's a great question. I've been asking for about seven months to see the books, which is the unrestricted right of every director, of which I am, and I've been repeatedly denied access to the books. I was promised, if I waited about five months, that by the time year-end came up, that I would be able to meet with the hospital accountant, and it was announced at the last board meeting that my promise was revoked. So, I'm sorry I can't answer the question.
Well, with their smoke, their fire, and I think you're on the right track there.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gilroy.
You know, again, Dr. Duncan and Dr. Caldwell, I can't tell you how thankful I am to you for your efforts. Our hospital is the very heartbeat of our community, and its future is dependent on what happens as a result of this move, which Sutter Health and Sutter Coast Hospital, the current situation is so tenuous. So, I applaud you. I thank you for your efforts. You can count on my personal support. I've heard your four requests very clearly, and you are listened to, sir. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other supervisor?
Supervisor McClellan.
I want to also thank you for your hard work. Hearing your report, I think I need to go to the hospital because I can feel my heart just kind of...
Mine, too.
Because it's just like, whoa. It's just so aggravating. And we did, in today's agendas, we're sending a letter to the AG's office, and I'm almost thinking that we need to actually ask counsel, or we need to eye-to-eye an Attorney General that's going to be taking a look at this. It's my understanding that Sutter lost a couple of cases in San Francisco that were similar, and we need to ramp it up and somehow find the dollars to make sure that this just doesn't, isn't this giant that we're fighting, that just because they have more money, they get to take the toys. And I think that the people who work at Sutter are also concerned because they're living in kind of a cloud of uncertainty. And the docs that work for Sutter, it's difficult for them to be able to publicly make any statement. And I'm hoping that you have a good turnout tonight, and I'm hoping that with the announcement that they have postponed this, that people don't read that, oh, we won and it's over, it means that we now have to ramp up the fight, because now they're going to cloak it in court rather than in public opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Duncan, I won't be able to be at the meeting this evening, so if I can get a forward copy of that presentation. And I do, I think the consensus of the board is your requests, or we want to give direction to staff to follow up on these requests. And I know it's been said by almost every supervisor here, is we do appreciate your work on this. I know sometimes it's obviously an unfunded work that you do, but if you're not staying on top of it, as Supervisor Finnegan said, the community sometimes will get complacent about things until it's right in their face, and it may be too late at that point. So, we appreciate the work that you do do on it. It's disturbing that, it just reminds me of that old movie, It's a Wonderful Life, and we're dealing with Mr. Potter right now. And it's really disturbing. I mean, this is a bad view of what corporate America, on the bad side, what corporate Americans do sometimes. And the community, unfortunately, we're at their mercy at this point, and I think we need to really do, need to fight back on it. Supervisor Hamson.
Yeah, I won't be able to make the meeting either, and I would like a copy of that also, please. And I echo everybody's sentiments here. You know, we really appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have a letter on the agenda, as Supervisor McClellan said.
Thank you all very, very much.
We're going to open up for public comment in just a second. Okay, thank you.
I have an A, Dr. Caldwell.
Okay, so, Dr. Caldwell first, if you could, yeah, and then we'll open up public comment at that.
Hi again, everyone.
Hello.
So, I'm coming with two hats. My first hat is the Delnart Healthcare District, and my other hat is the former Chief of Staff and Board Member of the hospital. In terms of the healthcare district, I want to make it really clear that the legal action we have with Sutter Health now is very limited. It is, by no means is answering all the hundreds of other questions to do with charitable trust corporations, and board fiduciary responsibility, and medical staff autonomy. It's only addressing a very skinny little piece of contract law. And so, when Sutter Health says they're continuing the lawsuit in order to provide clarity, it will be no clarity from this lawsuit. Alls they're doing is forcing the poor people of Delnart County to spend money that's supposed to be going to the healthcare of Delnart County. And that's why we have this incredible urgency that we need lots of help right now, because the price is just going up and up fast, and that if you personally or direct your staff that Greg and Anne Marie Duncan have amassed all the facts, all the contact people with every agency that's involved, and they can put you or your staff fast-track in line with what needs to be done. Because the healthcare district has a $115,000 arbitration bill coming up in two months, and we would really like to get this settled before that. So, that's the healthcare district. Now, as former hospital board member, I want to address, you know, what is frequently the sort of hushed-up questions when people start hearing about all this impropriety that's gone on. And there's always this sense of, what's the other side? How did we ever get to this point? And just to give you some insight into the board culture, so I was on the board in 2010 and 2011, and I always had this very odd feeling whenever I was at a board meeting, that somehow I didn't live in the same world that the rest of them did. And I finally, after studying it for those two years, came to the conclusion that the difference is, the highest virtue in that boardroom is to go along. And to go along means go along with what the Sutter executives tell them to do. So, I'm sure of that part. That's how we got into this mess, and why that board, which most of us know the board, and they're local people, and they're our neighbors, and there's that repeated question of, how did our neighbors vote to do all this? And so, the answer is, is because that is what they're taught, that their highest level of service is to go along with what Sutter executives tell them to do. Now, the part I can answer is, how did Sutter executives train them to do that? I still don't have the answer to that, but it is still the culture of the board. As recently as the last couple of weeks, one board member said something to the effect of, "No, I never did read the governing documents of the corporation we were transferring our hospital to. And not only did I not read them, I'm not going to read them." And the reason is, is because I was told I trust the Sutter executives, and I trust them, so that's why I voted that way. And again, another board member within the last couple of weeks blamed me for the conflict, said, "Because I didn't vote with the group, I created a conflict, and therefore that is a conflict of interest," and that I owe the board an apology. But I just want to make it really clear that that is the level of thinking that is still going on, which is why we cannot let our guard down. They're still coming on fast. And they might have a culture of, that they just go along, but as I think this community has shown in the last year, this community does not have a culture of just go along. And we are going to fight this to the end, and we really need your help. So, thanks for listening.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Caldwell, with all deepest sincere friendship and respect, I am so glad you're not trainable.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. Any other public comment? Yes? If you can come up to the microphone first, so the public can hear you all.
If you go to Sutter Coast 990 for 2011, they accessed $37 million of what amounts to a revolving line of credit through a joint powers authority. It appears because you cannot get their financial statements, but from the public documents, they used about $16 million of that. And you can either, you can get a 990, they're legally obligated to present you one if you ask, or you can get one online at GuideStar.com. GuideStar has all the 990s that are available of all nonprofit organizations, but it's part of a joint powers funding authority that is public money and tax-free bonds.
Were you ever able to look at previous reports, the 990s?
Yes.
And did you ever see any kind of loan like that, or any kind of acquisition of money?
Sutter Health has had some of the money, but I couldn't find anything in the last few years. And the appearance is, based on some questions, that it was used for capital improvements at the hospital, and some of the things, it might have been for air conditioning. But, you know, no one there in management will answer any questions. There's a strong cloud of confidentiality. So, the only public documents that you can access are the 990, and you can't see the 12 report yet, because that doesn't have to be filed, I think, the latest until August of this year, but through 11.
Well, I appreciate that, because, you know, there's an old adage that if you want to get to the core of the solution or the core of the problem, follow the money.
The Sutter Coast Hospital 990, by the way, is almost twice as long as Sutter Health's.
Wow. Incredible. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. I think consensus by the board is to honor Dr. Duncan's requests and have county council take a look at those items, and we're going to be voting on a letter here shortly. So, all right, at this point, I will entertain the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, this is minus number four, which we were going to pull for discussion, so it's been moved to second. Any public comment on items on the consent agenda, minus number four? This is minus number four? Yeah?
Yes. I kind of have a concern, and, you know, it's excellent that we have a community nutrition expansion pilot.
Is this number four?
Yes.
Okay, so you need to have a seat until we get to that point. We pulled that for discussion.
Okay.
Should have called him on his phone.
So, I guess the only, yeah. The only question I have is, we do have the letter to the Attorney General regarding, is it strong enough? Did it, do you feel it included all the issues that Dr. Duncan and Dr. Caldwell brought up? Doctor, have you had a chance to look at the letter we're sending?
I think it's...
It's the letter.
Oh, okay, so, should I come up?
Yeah, come on up.
The question is, do you feel it's adequate, or did we miss a sentence or two?
It's a start. I mean, there's so many details, you know, that need to be looked into, but I think it's an adequate start.
Good. Thank you. We will, by the way, and I've talked to State Senator Nielsen, and I know other board members have talked to Senate Member Chesbrough, and we're going to take this up with the state matters as well, because it is a big concern, and more legislators involved, the better, I think, so.
And the Office of U.S. Congressman Huffman contacted me about 10 days ago with an interest, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, for the members of the public, we have our letters in the consent agenda, so if you've got it online, it would be a pretty good read for you as well. Okay, so we're gonna take up item, well, one, thank you for the presentation, the update, Dr. Caldwell, Dr. Duncan, and Mrs. Duncan as well. I appreciate the update, so. At this point, we're gonna take item number four, approval and authorize chair to sign an agreement with the county of Siskiyou to continue their portion of the community nutrition expansion pilot project, CNEPP, for the period October 1st to 2012 through September 30th through 2013 for $75,000 as requested by Director of Health and Human Services, Director Blatnick.
I'm not sure what the question is.
Okay.
Yeah, I brought the issue up, Mr. Blatnick. Now, this was a.
Roger, I don't mean to step on your toes here, but before we proceed with discussion, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Okay. Go. Thank you. Mr. Blatnick, I was gonna ask you specifically, could you come back to the speaker's podium?
The reason I brought this up is this was a program that was, I guess, passed in January of 2012. It's a tri-county effort. It's Delnart, Trinity, and Siskiyou County. The program has been in effect since October. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So tell us how it's going. So there's a ongoing data for four or five months. Tell us about the program and can you kinda?
This agreement is with the county of Siskiyou. We don't operate this program. That's before you today. The program, what we do is we're, as a lead agency, we provide some administrative and fiscal assistance in order for us to be able to receive the funds from the state California. Specific activities are outlined in their work plan. And they're accountable to the State Department of Public Health to carry out their work plan. They have a program manager that they report to, and they will receive an annual evaluation by the state.
My question was, is it going on, is this CNEP program going on here in Delnart County? I'm aware this is a payment on behalf of Siskiyou County. I'm asking for an update of how this is going on here as of October 1st, 2012. Can you give me a report, please?
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I think it'd be fair to, I mean, we've got each, most of the departments are gonna be making presentations.
Here's my conflict, Chair Sullivan. You're asking me to vote on this as an extension. I'm trying to find out how it's effective. And I understand, let me, the chair, please, let me speak just for a moment. And this isn't even our county, and that's where I'm conflicted. I've read it, I've done some research on it. I've even called all five supervisors in Siskiyou County for their input on it because this affects them.
Call me, if you happen to help you.
All right, so my question is, I want some more information about how it's effective since we're continuing it. I personally have questions about this kind of $250,000 program, how it's working here before I will vote for it to be implemented in the county.
Okay, well, this, sorry to interrupt you. We're dealing with the money that's going to Siskiyou County. It's not the program in Delnart County, but I'm sure Director Blatnick can come to a future board member and give us.
Absolutely.
Answer the questions that you do have. But I think we're, to find, this really isn't an update on the Delnarts program. We're just the administrative officer on this point. It really is the Siskiyou County that we're voting on today. So if you're not comfortable voting, that's different, but I think the request has been made now of Director Blatnick. He will come to a future board meeting to make a presentation.
Be delighted to do that.
Okay, well, I made this email request upon notification that this was gonna be on the agenda to Mr. Blatnick beforehand, and I was under the impression that I would hear some more about it today, but apparently that's not gonna take place.
No, we can put it on the next agenda.
Well, you know, and Roger, sincerely, if you have questions about something you don't understand, give me a call. I've been around for a few years on some of these things and understand how they work, but I saw the emails and I saw the answer, and it was spot on. And I'm not sure why you keep pulling stuff like this.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Finnegan, for your wisdom in telling me how I'm doing my due diligence.
It was an offer to educate you, sir.
Thank you again, Supervisor Finnegan.
If you don't need my help, that's fine.
I'm just doing my own due diligence and going right directly to the source of this, and this is Mr. Blatnick. And I was hoping that I'd hear some more information so that I could intelligently vote on this issue this morning. That's not gonna take place, I can see that.
Public comment at this point, Mr. Miles?
My first comment, I hope you'd all get along because the dialogue I just heard, I believe, is a little disappointing. Because I think Mr. Gitlin has every right to ask about programs and the money that comes to this county. But my biggest concern, in this county, nutrition is a critical element. And I think David would agree with me on this. My understanding is that Siskiyou County is giving us a little money to have a program within our social services department. But what, if this is not true, why are we voting for a program in Siskiyou County when the county residents really, I mean, I'd like an explanation myself. But there's another issue. I'm aware that the school district is losing its nutrition program. And the university corporate extension program that's supposed to be bringing a nutrition program once a month to our C grant program is not occurring. Mr. Sullivan, I would hope you would look into that.
Okay, so this is on this specific item in the agenda?
Yeah. So what I'm saying.
But the UC grant is not?
I know, but it's all about nutrition. And in this county, with the level of poverty, nutrition is important. And if you people, maybe because most of you don't have the kind of income that most of us have, that our shopping dollars when we go to Safeway is important. And then you have the SNAP program that Gary administrates. I'd like to see the majority of you live on the $5 per person per week that he gives out in stamp funding.
So, Director Blatnick, you will make a presentation at the next board meeting on this item, for, specific to Delnart County?
Sure.
Of course. Okay. Excellent. Okay, any other public comments regarding item four on the agenda? Okay, I'll bring it back to you. Yes?
Phil Hildger, resident of Delnart County. First and foremost, as far as the nutrition aspect is, I think it's, you know, it's individual. It's up to everybody for their own nutritional, whether you have money or not, you have to be a good steward of your money to buy food enough to maintain your own nutritional value in life. But if I'm correct, I think, Roger, Mr. Gitlin, you want to know the monies that we're receiving, now correct me if I'm wrong, from Siskiyou County, if we're, if we are receiving monies from them, if we are using them properly, is that, am I wrong?
That's not exactly correct, though. It's a $250,000 grant. That was voted on by a previous board of supervisors. And this, Delnart County is the lead county of the three counties. What's issued this vote right now is there's a $75,000 segment that we, this board, because we are the lead county, are voting for Siskiyou County. The program is already in operation here in Delnart County. My information was one, I want to know what's going on so I can be an informed voter to see if this is working. If it's not working.
Okay, well, we're not.
That's it, but we're not gonna discuss it. So you understand the protocol on that, Phil?
We're not gonna do dialogue and a lot of public comments.
Yeah, I know. I just, if it's not really costing the county any money, I don't see any real reason to worry about it myself personally, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on the item? Supervisor Hemmingson, you have a comment?
You know, maybe I'm totally way out in left field here, but the way I read this thing is this is a grant that we received for the three counties. And this is the portion that's going to Siskiyou County. And how tough is that to understand, that it's a three-county agreement? We're the lead agency. That's how grant funding gets dispersed, is we, I'm assuming that at some point we'll give Trinity County if we haven't already approved that. So we'll get that, and then we will get some money. So out of this, the three counties are gonna get some money for this nutritional program, which each county individually is going to do themselves. It's their program. We're just the conduit to pass the money through to these counties.
And that's, that's what's before us, so for point of clarification, Supervisor Sullivan, are you asking Gary to make a report on Siskiyou County?
No.
Because that's what this is about.
No, I'm asking for an update on a future program and.
On ours? That has nothing to do with this?
Yes, so I'm gonna call the question at this point. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes, passed and adopted. So going on to general government, item number eight, direct the community development department to work with county council to prepare draft amendments to chapter 7.08 nuisance and 7.09 recreational vehicles as enumerated in attachment A of this board report as requested by a deputy director of building and planning.
Good morning. Staff has been approached by the public and by several board members regarding our existing public nuisance ordinance and our recreational vehicles and tents ordinance as far as ways to make it better and hopefully to encourage voluntary compliance of our ordinances and so on, and to improve overall our code enforcement program. What I have attached to the board report are a list of generally those items that we're looking at. The first includes an increase in the maximum daily civil penalty for nuisance abatement from $15 to $100. Revisions that add to the text to reduce some misuse of our short-term RV stays in neighborhoods. General housekeeping requirements, clarifications regarding existing codes. These don't actually change the content. They just provide more explanation and help our code enforcement officer convey that to the public. Also looking at expanding the definition of public nuisance to include the uses of buildings for drug houses, expanding the types of noxious weeds that we can enforce, looking at substandard buildings, keeping people out of unsafe situations. I think that about covers it. Oh, and also landscape maintenance, where you have people who have derelict lawns that come to a state that, under our current ordinance, we can't enforce. And so that is it in a nutshell, but what we were looking for is direction for the board to go back as staff, draft some ordinance amendments, have them reviewed by county council's office, and then bring them back to the board for a public meeting. And we have the code enforcement officer here today to answer any specific questions you may have.
Mr. Mason, any questions from supervisors?
No, good point.
Love to see direction be given, and I'm glad you're with county council because when you talk about landscape maintenance, the derelict needs to be in, the verb is so, you don't tell me to mow my lawn. When it doesn't need it.
Yeah, we are kind of looking at only addressing the landscaping within the urban services boundary for the city of Crescent City, which is our only designated boundary, so we're not gonna be out in wherever. You may be within the urban services boundary, so.
So, just out of curiosity, how's this match up with cities? I mean, right now, okay, I take it back. My question, are you going to coordinate with the city on this? Maybe we can.
Well, I've spoken to Mr. Taylor. And both he and I were waiting for a specific direction to meet together to go over this. Just because there's some political issues and neither one of us want to get in the middle of that. If the board directs me and the council directs him, we'd be more than happy to meet and go, but we didn't want to be off.
Okay. Off the reservation. That's one of the things we've tried to focus on going, is starting to make these ordinances and rules aligned. It doesn't matter where you're at, within the county, city limits or not.
So it's the same, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments from supervisors?
Yeah, I wanted to, were you gonna make any presentation, just reiterate what Heidi is talking about? Did you have anything to add, Dave? Do this. I had a couple of questions for both of you with regard to this, but I didn't know if you were gonna continue.
If you have a question, be happy to answer.
Well, you know, again, as you know, I kind of approached you and I said, you know, how can we make your job easier? What is it that we need to do to relook at this, the ordinance? And Heidi and you were very kind to give me your input, and I, there was one aspect that was not addressed, and perhaps Heidi, you can readdress that, is that do you have enough money to do this? And I, the number 14,500 comes to mind, and it's yearly, and so you have to kind of budget it correctly. Would it not be helpful to implement some kind of a revolving account as part of one of the changes?
That is certainly an option that we have, and I believe that the ordinance as it sits is set up for that, but we would need to get some approval in order to do that. And we have had discussions with administration during some of the pre-budget meetings as far as looking at that for the fiscal year 13, 14, as far as having the board make a decision whether or not they would like to do the revolving. With $14,500, it is very difficult to do very much.
Yeah, it kind of reminds me when I need some dental work. And I, the number exceeds my allowed for the year, so I said, well, can you schedule one procedure on June 25th and it'll come back July 5th because that's the fiscal year? And is this kind of what you're faced with, Dave?
Yeah, on larger abatements, in the past, we've done that, did the first half in one fiscal year and the second half, and then the following week, and then, but that wiped the budget for the rest of the year, so.
So I, the general consensus of the board is this is a good idea to go forward with that direction to staff.
It sure is, and as far as the finances, you know, you should point out that really the major cost is borne by the property owner. We only step in as a last resort. It always comes to the board. But I want to acknowledge Karen Phillips, the neighborhood watch out there in Parkway, Dundas area that helped bring this chronic RV, you know, people are moving transient and whatnot, and really appreciate your work there, Karen.
Thank you. Okay, so the consensus boards, direction to staff on this. Mr. Miles?
I hope I'm not preaching to the choir today. Huh? I'll tell you, I'll tell you my little dilemma after the meeting, Martha. I hope you people will take this item because I think you could make an amendment to it.
Richard, we're not voting on anything. All we're doing is giving direction to staff to come, we'll do it at a future meeting.
If I, this board can give staff direction. And one of the items that you could give direction to staff today, because Mr. Mason admitted something at this podium just a minute ago, that he hasn't met with Mr. Taylor. And one of the issues is, this is a hot potato because of the political ramifications of the county and the city blight and nuisance ordinances. I would hope today that this body would give direction to staff, your staff, to meet with city staff, to address the city and the county ordinance so they all come in compliance so that both blight officers would have the tool to make my county. the city and the county ordinance, so they all come in compliance, so that both blight officers would have the tool to make my county and my city...
Okay, Richard, not, and I really don't mean to cut you off, but kind of do. You, we did do that, that's, direction was done to get... Well, no, but they, that's why we're giving direction for them to do that, and that was part of the direction. Sheriff Wilson?
Yes, I'd like to, again, express my gratitude to the board for supporting Dave Mason and his efforts. You know, as we read the paper today, there's a tragedy that goes along with these, these lifestyles that are often led. We saw that all too clearly this weekend, when people live in these trailers with inadequate electricity, inadequate housing, inadequate sanitation, inadequate water, and the public health issues that delve from that. Unfortunately, we've seen this tragedy too many times in Delmar County, where people pull trailers into people's backyards, or into, into lots, empty vacant homes, into empty vacant lots throughout the county, and then set up residency in these areas where it becomes a major problem and a nuisance, and the drug culture that exists in there, unfortunately, my, my staff deals with it. It's far too prevalent, there's much more than, than my staff or, or Dave Mason has the ability to deal with, because one of the biggest serious issues, especially when you deal with, with travel trailers, RVs, and others, is the disposal. It is a costly process with inadequate areas to be able to take care of those, those types of, of vehicles. And, and so the support, the dollars need to be there, but I wanted to lend my support to, to the efforts that we have, because, because it is a, a critical issue, and it does, it does put lives at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Sheriff, while you're there, these RVs, trailers, illegals, that are confiscated somewhere along the line, that have been used for meth manufacturing, how do they get disposed of?
That's a very difficult situation right now, largely because the Department of Justice has, has done away with their hazardous waste response. So labs such as that, they're very expensive and in their, into their disposal, and also in the handling of them, whether it's, whether you're trying to get them for evidence collection. We are working with Humboldt, Mendocino, and Delmar County have, have joined, we have, we are going to be sending off two of our staff to a, to a meth lab disposal and, and handling course, and then we'll be joining with members from Humboldt and Delmar, and Mendocino County, to where the DOJ has made available one of their old vehicles that they used for meth labs, as well as the federal agencies, the DEA has also made available one of their vehicles. And so by combining the expertise and the personnel from various counties, we'll be able to share resources and, and that expertise, and hopefully, when we do encounter these labs, we'll, we'll still have the expertise and the ability to deal with them safely.
Good news.
Karen?
Thank you for considering this. I know that Dave and Heidi are probably getting tired of listening to the Dundas Neighborhood Watch, we've, we've sort of been repeat offenders in their office. And we've had some issues that most neighborhoods probably go through, but nobody's really paying attention, is having serial RV squatters and unlicensed RV parks that are cropping up in neighborhoods. And while our comments are not intended to harm the property owner who has grandma come and stay in their RV, or aunt and uncle come and stay in their RV for two weeks, which is allowable by law, we would like to make sure that staff has a little bit more of an ability to get these people dealt with in a more timely manner, and without as much problem as we've been noticing. I know that Dave has got his, his plate full, we're not the only neighborhood that's experiencing this problem. And I just wanted to point out that when the Board of Supervisors first discussed that ordinance like this in nineteen ninety-seven, and I was sitting where Tony's at, there was a huge outcry, people saying that, you know, you're taking away my property rights by not letting me be able to sit in my driveway in my RV hooked up to the house with my sewer. Well, we live in lots that are acreage, we have wells, we have sewer. When someone doesn't have the appropriate water and sewer hookups, and electrical hookups, and they're dumping their waste, because I have never seen Roto-Rooter come down my street in the last six months that we've been examining these issues in particular, they're not using the appropriate sanitary conditions, they've got little kids living in these trailers, and I've got an RV, and I can tell you what, that two people live in an RV for a week, you've got some major sewer problems. So I've done it, and that's what dump stations are for. And the other thing is, is that I'd like to ask that you guys consider when you're thinking about the penalty, that the penalty be at least as much as, if not more, than what it would cost a person to stay in an RV park for the night. And the reason being is that you want to encourage them to go to the RV park, that's what RV parks are for, and that's what we'd like to encourage people to use them for, they have the appropriate sanitary conditions. And I, just again, pointing out that we have the zoning and health and safety rules and regulations that aren't being adhered to by people just parking an RV and, and moving around. And we've had, one RV has moved three different places in our neighborhood, and Dave's gotten a complaint three different times, and I feel sorry for them not having the appropriate sanitary conditions, they've got two little girls. They need to go somewhere where it's safe for them to be, so they don't end up on the front page of our newspaper again. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Other public comment?
Phil Hillger again, and I just want to make a quick kudo here to Mr. Finnegan, as well as Mr. Sullivan, and as well as to Dave. Because this problem that Karen's talking about was very ongoing where I live too, on Elk Valley Crossroad, and the neighbor, the property across the street from mine, not only was it being used as a drug drop-off zone, but it also is being used as a dump-off for, for garbage, and, you know, I, I called Mr. Finnegan first, and then I called Mr. Sullivan, and them working with, you know, Mr. Mason's department, it's been cleaned up, and, you know, I haven't had a problem since. And I just wanted, with everybody in the, in the area right now, I want to take advantage of just saying, you know, it's nice to see when departments do work, and I appreciate your efforts.
All right, thanks, thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
This is just a private citizen comment. I certainly understand, living in Delmar...
If you could notify yourself again.
Oh, I'm sorry, Helen Holgate.
Okay.
As a private citizen here in Delmar, the need for, I've listened to, I don't know how many people who've come and visited me, and I'm sure, or would imagine all of you have too, who say, what a lovely gorgeous place you live in, except there are some things that are not as lovely and gorgeous. And so, again, just, you know, from the public sector to say, hopefully, the enforcement and the fines that would eliminate some of the blight or nuisance that exists here would, I think, exponentially increase the, the joy of people coming and visiting here, deciding to move business here, you know, all the way around. And I've got just a, a personal kind of fun, maybe to provide a little bit of levity story, that I talked to Dave Mason, this has been months, months, and months ago, because I live on a block where there's a person that owns property, and they're not living here. And so because they don't live here, and they come up only infrequently for their property, we had grass that I literally will tell you was approximately this high before it was all over. And I called Dave, and I said, Dave, you know, we've got this going on, he says, okay, puts it down, and had to call him a couple of times, and he just said, look, I'm overloaded, and I certainly understand that. When we've got people that are working the best they possibly can with as much overload on their plates as Dave has, because of the kinds of things that we deal with. The end result was, the neighbors in our block ended up getting mice and stuff in our houses because of some of this kind of stuff, and I don't think any of us want to see that. So Dave's doing a great job, I know we need as much help as we can in this area, but I would certainly encourage the board to address this and do whatever possible to make these fines, make a difference in people's lives. And as a previous county child welfare worker, I can tell you, having people living in RVs that are not taking care of their children, or drugs being involved is, is a, is a thing that also certainly impacts the county, not just emotionally and physically, it certainly does financially.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, so direction's been given to staff, there isn't a vote necessary at this point, so, although the idea was thrown out there to make sure if they do go over thirty, to collect TOT, so... Anyway. Okay, we're going to go to item number nine on the agenda, nominate and appoint two members of the board to supervise to the Delmar County Solid Waste Management Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate yourself and Roger Gitlin. Supervisor Gitlin, sorry.
Been moved in second. At this point, I'll open up for public comment. Yes?
I have a few things to say today, and Mr. Sullivan, I hope you don't misunderstand me, but I want to remind Mr. Gitlin and yourself about an issue that I think is important. For two years, two solid years, the Solid Waste Authority, in my opinion, has been used as a political football by yourself and Mr. Hemmingsen. You had an ad hoc committee that you formed that didn't do squat. You decided to go to a ten-member board made up of the city and the county. In a year, a number of issues should have been looked at, everything from privatization to looking at the ordinances, to joint, in my opinion, joint funding for both the city and the county on the enforcement of blight. But I believe a mistake was made. I think it was made by representatives of the city and representative of the county. In that, Solid Waste Authority is a joint powers board. When you sit on that body, you are, as a delegate, you are representing as the county, this Board of Supervisors. You're not representing your own personal interest. And I believe, in the past, that prime principle was forgotten. I believe going back to the five-member board is a good choice. I hope a number of issues will be addressed in the remaining months of this year, because I think it's critical. But, again, don't, please don't march with your own personal agendas.
Mr. Miles, you need to wrap it up, you're past the three-minute mark.
Okay. The issues facing the ratepayers are too important to Mickey Mouse around, and for two years, that's what you've done.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, Andy?
So much with the board members that are going to be chosen. My original, I became aware of a meeting that was held, and I disagree with the legal determination. But that part of the, legal determination will be handled by legal staff that say yea, nay, or otherwise. The other part that came up in item number one, if you read it, there is a sentence that's in there, in the research to find out, it was my understanding, when the ten-member board passed an amendment and signed an amendment mid-year of last year, the city signed it in January, the joint powers agreement now changed, and it formed, or it detailed out how a committee would be formed, how, how action will be taken, that's the new set of rules. And when, all of a sudden, a legal determination that, hey, we can go back to a previous board that had been dissolved, I, I think, and it was my understanding, that board was dissolved, the new ten-member board took over, so therefore, how do you go back if there's term limits? But here again, legal will handle. The problem I have, that that's not a legal meeting, then if a contract was awarded, anything that was going on, if that isn't on the up and up, then that contract's null and void. So I would think it would, and Martha Rice does have a copy of this, that needs to be resolved. Item number two, which I don't understand, if the county and the city, and I'm dealing with the county now, if we're all on the transparent side and the up and up, then how come nobody knew about this meeting? Talked to Kevin Hendricks, he said he posted it on the board out here, he got hold of the triplicate, the triplicate didn't print it, so all of which task force did not know about it. And it's my understanding that it was only mentioned after your council, your private, or...
Closed session?
Closed session, that the meeting was going to be that night. That's not transparent.
Can I ask you, Mr. Larson, on how you know what discussion is happening in closed session?
I didn't say closed session.
You, you do.
I said after closed session.
You said it was mentioned, that I mentioned it after the board's closed session.
It was my understanding...
You need to talk into the mic.
It was my understanding, that when I was researching, who went to Martha Rice, how the meeting was even mentioned, it was my understanding that you mentioned, before the board meeting, after the board meeting, while you were sitting around, that there's a meeting, you were in the know, is what I'm commenting, not in closed session. That was never mentioned to me, that it was in closed session, that you mentioned. Said, if I printed something that was after closed session, so you're now in the public. My big complaint here is, I'm a member of the task force, I didn't know about it. You didn't have Leslie Mc, no, Leslie McNamara, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little warm, Leslie McNamara didn't, wasn't re-elected, so where was her alternate? Was the alternate told there was a meeting? It just seems to me there's no transparency. And I really think that most of the citizens of the county want to see transparency, and we ain't getting it.
Thanks, Andy. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
No.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, just for comment's sake, usually I thought this is nominations that are put forth by the chair, the recommendation by the chair, and so next time, why don't you, good starting point.
Okay, moving on to item ten. Consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar, authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
Today, we don't have any letters before the board in regards to specific legislation, just to know that we are continuing to monitor those as they come in through the advocates. As I mentioned the last time, the advocates are also doing their job when they're talking with legislators in regards to our legislative platform. As of today, the, you know, there are a number of bills out there, I think I reported last time, you know, a couple thousand, and many of those are spot bills. But as of today, primarily, I think, to report out is that, I think it was reported earlier, we'll be meeting with our advocate in Washington, D.C., primarily over the SRS issue, and attempting to explain that the impact on schools and, and roads in rural areas... to explain the impact on schools and roads in rural areas. And the primary issue right now apparently is that a lot of the legislators don't have a real good understanding of what it means to be maintaining roads and how that affects the U.S. Forest Service and the properties that are involved in most of the NRA here, but in particular, most rural areas, and how our roads are the primary accesses. So that is one of the goals and we hope to get that point across to encourage the funding to be continued.
Okay. Any other, Supervisor Finnegan?
No.
Legislative budget matters. Supervisor Hemmerson.
Can we go back, David, to your comment on the last item?
Yeah.
I was on the agenda review and Supervisor Sullivan did recommend two people to be on here, but county council said the way that that needed to be made up was they needed to be nominated and then elected.
In the main.
That's per...
That's not the way we do it.
That's per the way the administrative manual now reads that it will be done. That's the reason.
So that's the only reason that I changed, and I changed that because that's...
Okay. I appreciate that, Jerry.
...the recommendation. So just to let you know that that was not, Supervisor Sullivan wasn't here. I was, I'm the bad guy there.
No, no, I wasn't looking for a bad guy. I just said every other time, at the beginning of the year, it would have been on the appointment list.
Exactly.
We wouldn't have done them independently.
Exactly.
Okay, we're going to go on to mid-year budget update. Item 11. Jay.
Before the board today is a report including summary and discussion on the mid-year budget estimates and emphasize estimates in this case. It is to the department's responsibility to come forward with their estimates and then we will meet typically with any departments where there are significant issues and/or questions because sometimes the estimates come in and we'll question either line by line or the total or some issue that has come up during the process. Before you today, you'll see a report that indicates what the total revenue is and what the expenses are. And you'll notice that there's a approximate $514,000 deficit which is offset by a fund balance. In my report, I mention tenuous because it's about what we expect on an annual basis. There are a few issues in here that are discussed in detail. One of those primarily has to do with unintended consequences of AB 109 and the effect on the jail. And I combined them, but jail patrol and coroner. Obviously, we've been talking about avenues to try to offset those costs and we've been advocating and contacting the Department of Finance through CSAC regarding the growth fund that's available that may be able to help us by the end of the year. At this point, there's an anticipated deficit in those departments. One of the contracts for outside bed space has not been realized and the other one is approximately nine beds on average, whereas we needed 20 to actually come in on a balance on that. Additionally, there was a $50,000 set aside as revenue that dealt with penal code and the ability of the district attorney to file on cases and generate revenue that would offset the cost of marijuana eradication. And at this point, we have had no successful cases, so there's no revenue in that line. In general terms, you'll see that...
Jay, can I stop? You said we have had no successful cases there or have we had opportunity? My understanding is there was opportunity and we were just having issues with the DA fulfilling his commitment.
At the beginning of the fiscal year, the opportunity was there with at least one case. And so at this point, I'd have to have that discussion with the DA as to what cases and why those cases may not have gone.
And I'm glad the sheriff's here. Maybe he can expound on that a little bit.
Yes, I was informed by the, I have been informed by the district attorney as of about two weeks ago that they made their first funding under this penal code, so about $1,300, not a whirlwind. But many of the other cases that we have handled that have or are eligible anyway to be adjudicated under this and realize the dollars that we actually, some of the dollars we actually still have, I mean, we actually have in our possession because they were seized funds. But that would fall under this potentially being realized are still there. The cases have not been progressed on, they have not moved through the system. So we still have the potential there. And as of two weeks ago, the district attorney actually did do a filing under that and did realize some funds that's coming through that program. So, you know, at least some movement is being made at this point in time to move in through the court system on that direction. And his email to me said, more to come. So I'm looking forward to seeing the more-to-come process.
That's great news. Thank you. I appreciate that.
On that note, if it is successful and we get beyond that revenue projection, then we'll be looking at what avenues we can use to assist with furthering the project, which is what the agreement was at the beginning.
So at this point, the request is to receive and file mid-year budget update as submitted by the county administrator officer and the auditor controller, direct that departments maintain revenue and expenditures as estimated in the mid-year report and continue working on solutions to reduce net accounting costs, freeze non-essential general fund positions that become vacant prior to year-end, and any non-general fund positions that result in increased costs to the general fund, and freeze all non-essential services and supplies expenditures.
Essentially, that recommendation, just to clarify, is to give some direction to the department heads. And we typically have given this same direction on an annual basis, to scrutinize your budget and don't spend just because you have some in your line.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved to second. Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmerson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Just want to notate, this is the best scenario that we've seen at a mid-year report in years. And I think you adequately stated, be cautious because we're used to the $2 million deficits and we can't make them up without cuts.
Yeah, we would certainly love to see a swing to the positive at any given time, but if we can come in on budget, that's certainly a plus. It's close, let's put it that way. It's still in the negative.
No, we appreciate the work the budget teams done, Jay and Clint and Neil and Joey's been involved with that. So we do appreciate the work you guys have been doing. So other than that, all items, we are adjourned until next meeting.